Welcome to the Wakefield Board of Appeal Subcommittee Meeting of October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This meeting is being recorded. It will be available on the town's website in the next couple of days. I'll take roll call in a second, but we'll start with the agenda. Consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number, one, three, zero, one, seven, one, five, eight, five, nine, two, meeting ID, eight, one, eight, six, six, zero, eight, eight, six, eight, four, passcode, one, seven, nine, eight, five, eight. Please use the dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. In compliance with the American with Disabilities Act, this location is acceptable, it's accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodation, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Renault, town engineer at seven, eight, one, two, four, six, six, three, zero, eight, as far as in advances of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your request. Advance notification will enable the town to make make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you. Agenda. We'll call order and then case twenty-four, ten. The residents at Nahant LLC. And I was hoping Chip would be on by the time I went through that.
Is he on the phone or is he, I mean, is he logging in by phone or by computer? Do you know?
I don't know. But I can see all ten participants. Obviously, there's not that many of us. I don't see any.
Right. I mean, I don't mind.
He indicated via text that he was gonna log in, so.
Yeah. Pardon me. Well, Scott, do you mind sharing screen through through the chair?
No, yes, Chip, hold on.
Oh, all right.
He was having trouble with the link. I just sent him in and one, so hopefully that will solve it.
Okay.
You know, we'll give him two more minutes, then in the interest of everyone else's time, we should probably just start and he can jump in.
Okay. And if we have to repeat, we will.
Now, why don't we roll?
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Chair. Pulling this together as we work through revised concepts. I think we've made some substantial headway and you'll see the concept in a moment. But what you're about to see, just to give you a little introduction, is, in our opinion, a substantial proposes a substantial density reduction from a hundred units to eighty units. We get the parking count up to one point five spaces and the traffic circulation is improved, but still maintaining what the fire department has wanted since the beginning of this, which is access to the building on all sides. Something I think at one of the TAC meetings, the deputy chief indicated he hardly ever sees. So we were happy to accommodate that. And it also contemplates a reduction. We we get that eighty units in three floors over podium. So we still have the general kind of feel of the of the original proposal in the sense only to the, in the sense that the building kind of looks the same. It's just shrunken down, pushed back, and allows for a lot more of the things that the town wanted, more green space, again, increased parking density, center access drive. Building pushed back about seventy feet, a little over seventy feet from the front. Reduce massing effect because not only is the building pushed back, the floors are reduced and we believe fewer impacts on adjacent property. So Scott, if you don't mind through the chair, and here's Chip. Do I need to repeat that, Chip?
If you are mute, I can I can cover it.
No, I heard most of it.
Oh, good. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna hand it over to Scott. I've got Stefano Basso as well, project architect, Scott Cameron from Warren Cameron Group, and they're gonna talk about the more technical aspects of this concept plan, which is, as you'll see, a little more than a touch.
Hey, good afternoon. For the record, Scott Cameron with the Warren Cameron Group, sixty-six Elm Street in Danvers. Thanks for having us again. Following our last subcommittee meeting, we've continued to fine tune the project design. You'll see this this here is gonna look more polished than what we had in the last meeting. Notably, my my can scratch hand hand markups are gone and and we've we vetted this a little more thoroughly. So it it should be a little bit familiar. You know, the bigger aspects, the the single entry drive, which we have flexibility to slide really a lot anywhere along the frontage to get that, you know, get any sightline concerns, you know, perfect on the Haunt Street. There would be a parking fields in the front and cars would have the opportunity to to go left or right. There's three sixty circulation, all twenty-four foot wide, two directional. So there's no one way dead ends, turnaround decision points, things like that. All the parking is ninety degrees with the exception of two parallel spaces here and drop off spaces here. And with regards to the building configuration, it's about the same as what you saw in the last go around. We're about seventy-two feet from, this would be from the property line, which puts it about eighty feet back from the curb line in the Haunt Street to where you you get to the building front. There's a garage entrance to the front part for parking under in the front part on this side. And then there's the rear entrance on the back side to get some more parking in this in this section. The I started to add in just some generic tree and bush and shrub blocks just to start to get a little sense of like the size of the the green areas on there. There's quite a bit more green on this space. The darker green along the frontage that would be within the right away, and then the darker kind of orange would be the the public sidewalk that would get reconstructed. The lighter green within the site are more, you know, these are areas of either, there could be ledgy areas here that are existing. You could have kind of perimeter screening, but that is open, open landscaped area that would be be more for landscaping aesthetics, things like that. And then the the chartreuse colors, which go right through the middle of the site, these these I would consider more. You know, this one's roughly twenty-seven feet by forty-five feet. This one's twenty-five by forty plus or minus. So these are fairly sizable open spaces right around the building of twelve hundred square feet, which could be palleted for any number of things. And then on this side, this had been paved before. I just did a little very simple sketch of a little, you know, this would be like a five foot wide walking area with a series of benches, landscaping, an area of people to park. You could put, you know, you potentially put some grill stations out here. You know, maybe a little a little fountain feature. You know, there's any number of things that you can you can kind of palette in these spaces. This one here is closer to 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 two thousand square feet on this side. So it's a that's a bigger space. As you come around the back of the building, the the beige color is is the the walking route, so three sixty pedestrian circulation around the building. I relocated the solid waste. The last subcommittee, we had it kind of tucked into the corner here, right next to the building. I've relocated that towards the back and actually increased the size. And now it's a full, you know, twenty yard compactor space for solid waste and then another space for recycling if they do choose to sort that. But this could certainly accommodate a lot more solid waste back here, so less frequent pickups required. The big thing is the height. And I had been working with Stefano on that. We have roughly a twenty-one thousand square foot footprint building shown here. The ground level would be your parking, your lobby, mailroom, and 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 some other common space as well as some utility rooms, which would be more on the front face of the building. These little bump outs would probably have utilities under. And in the floors above your second, third, and fourth, this would this would be a four story building. So we've taken a full story off of what you had before, so the building is shorter. And we're looking at, we the next thing we would be doing is taking a look at the ratios of the units, studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. If we look at it in the context of bedrooms, we're somewhere in the vicinity of a hundred and five to a hundred and twenty bedrooms, regardless of the ratios. And just as an example, you know, we would need for eighty units, we would have required to have eight three beds, because ten percent under the forty B statute. You weigh twenty-two beds, thirty-one beds and twenty-two studios. And the ratios here, you know, you're you're fifty-two effectively one bedroom units of the eighty. The population is thereby less, so there's less people living there. You get economic economies, not necessarily because of the affordable requirements, but they're more affordable units for for people to get into. That also translates to less vehicle trips and impacts on a Haunt Street. These were concerns raised, so that we would expect to see a lower trip generation with a more more heavy single and studio ratio. And this design currently accommodates a hundred twenty parking spaces, which is one and a half to one parking spaces per unit, which breaks down with forty-seven garage, sixteen compact, the two drop off and then fifty-five just standard sized spaces, whether they're handicap or parallel or or ninety degree pull in. Open space we've brought up. It will be at least twenty-five percent. So this would include any landscape, park, pedestrian areas that are not for building or vehicles would be the open space. And and this is first pass. I would expect that to be a minimum, a minimum number for the open space. And I think I talked about the the height in the stories already at fifty feet, plus or minus, and four stories would be the height. Utility perspectives, I don't have any concerns there. We have less impervious area, so we would still have stormwater systems underground in this area in the front part of the building and probably some in the back, same as the current design, which Bill Renault, the town engineer, the town engineer had had reviewed. Your water sewer, other utilities, again, no, no change there. Then there's less, less demand for water and sewer consumption in this in sewage disposal because it's a it's a smaller, smaller density and population in the property. I'm still accommodating the space for a transformer. This is actually the oversized version. This is thirteen by thirteen, so anticipating a single location, biggest size we we see these days, thirteen by thirteen, and that's kind of tucked in to an area where we can screen around it on either side. It's protected from, you know, so if your sightline to the street is protected, and yes, it will be visible in this front door area. More for people coming in and out of the building, but it kind of is what it is. They they've been utility companies have been frowning upon burying these things into the back corners where you can't see them, because that translates to they can't get to them to access them. The I haven't run fire truck templates on this. That would be, you know, pending any input we get from you guys today. That would be a next step for me to start checking that stuff. With the twenty-four foot aisles, though, I don't have any concerns. It's a very wide aisle. We start going narrower than that, that's when we start to have to get in there with the fine tooth comb, but twenty-four foot is your standard road width aisle within shopping centers. It's a pretty conventional engineering. With some, I'm confident the fire apparatus will will be able to circulate around this just fine when we do that next step. And that, those are the the bigger picture aspects of it. Again, I think you know, again, pending pending today, we would now take the next step and start to look at more of the floor plan, fine tuning these ratios for the units. The eight three bedrooms would be fixed at eighty. That would be, that would be a constant. It's just how are we breaking down the two ones in studios? And making sure also to keep in mind that the building will have an internal, you know, inside amenity space as well, which we expect to have a lounge area, a workout area within the building. They might be on different floors, but there's there's space allocated, if you recall in the floor plans from before, for these amenity spaces within the building as well. So there's interior and exterior spaces for residents to to get out of their their apartments for a different, a different experience in the property. So that's the ten thousand foot on the current concept.
And among the density reduction, parking and traffic circulation, all of those additional mitigation factors, I think it's important to note that all of the mitigation that was employed in the in the past, Scott touched upon this in the in the current iteration of the plan that's before the board are all maintained. So no stormwater spill off runoff on adjacent properties, no icing effect on the front of the on the Haunt Street. All of these concerns that came up that I believe we addressed throughout the course of the project hearings and review are all maintained. Yeah. So I just wanna 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 point that out and how Stefano does configure the floor layouts that's that's gonna be worked on in addition to the additional work Scott will do once we get your feedback on this.
Okay, is that the entirety of your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Chip, comments, questions?
Is he still on mute?
Yeah, Chip, you're on mute if if you want to come off.
Yeah, I mean, I I mean, we're we're getting there, you know, I I wish we had seen this, you know, four months ago, but we didn't, so. You know, once you do your fire, I I think this would be worthwhile to take back to the board and get their feedback on it. I I think one of the biggest hurdles that you've got to get through is TAC.
Yeah.
And and whether this does it or not, I don't know.
I think that if I could just respond to that quickly, and we don't have Scott Thornton on, so I don't want to overstep and and over represent, but the handful of issues that came out of TAC, I think, are entirely addressed with this with this plan. You've got the center access drive. They were really hyper focused on that on that site distance issue. And as Scott mentioned, there's latitude to move that left or right. Depending on how TAC, there's flexibility. Depending on how TAC comes down on it, circulation throughout the site is is better. The reduction in the overall footprint just allows the development to breathe a little better. And I I I guess my 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 conclusion, Chip, to that is my comment, I really think that TAC is going to like this, but I don't want to presuppose what they're going to do. I expect they're gonna vet this like they did the other. And I think we'll be we'll be prepared to address whatever issues. I mean, the the parking count was an issue. We have come up in that parking ratio. You know, we've we basically sought to address everything that TAC was concerned about. And obviously, this is a work in progress, right? So
Yeah.
There'll there'll be more, but presenting this to the board, is it worthwhile to go forward at a hearing this this Wednesday?
So my my comment would be that, you know, everybody still will, I I don't know what people will say. I don't know whether people say the reduction in the units is enough. I don't know how my other board members are feeling for the number of units. You know, I still feel it's a big, large, complex project for Nahant Street, which, you know, doesn't have sidewalks. It's a it's a thoroughfare to the high school. You know, I I'm still trying to get my head around how, you know, the the number of units. So I don't know what my other members are gonna say. I think you guys have come a long way. I I like how it sits on the the building on the on the site better. I like how we've gotten away from the Haunt Street a little bit. You know, but but personally, if it was three stories, that would feel better than four, but you know, a lot of it is safety, 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 and and that's gonna be TAC's call, not not mine. I'm not a parking and and drive expert. So Tom, what are your thoughts?
No, I agree. I I think it's, I actually think it's worthy to bring back to the board. I do think you're gonna still hear concerns about the number of units and some other things as well as fitting within the context of the neighborhood. And if you know forty B, you know, safety is a very important element, and we're certainly gonna want to hear from TAC, but it's not the only prong that gets looked at, you know. It has to fit into the context of the neighborhood and and there's some other things in there too. So I do think it's worthy to bring on next Wednesday, or we have an extension till the thirty-first. If you're not ready next Wednesday, wanna clean it up a little bit. Certainly the meeting afterward. Be good just to get a gut check from the board as we pursue. I think you guys should be pursuing TAC, when's their next meeting? And talking to them about it. And I don't want to get into every detail, but Scott, if you can just make a note on the, as I'm looking at it on the lower left hand corner, you said there's a twenty foot aisle, I'll I'll take your credit for it. But that turn looks tight. Yeah, exactly back there, the exactly that corner. If you could look at that when you're talking to TAC, make sure that measured and that the fire apparatus can get around.
Hello?
Mr. Conway, we're not doing public comment right now. So if you could look at that, Scott, and then as well, how are, I see that you moved the the trash and the recycling to the back corner. It seems to be right in front of parking spaces, though. How is that serviced? Scott, you're on mute. You don't have to answer that now, but those are just gonna be issues that if you could.
I can clarify it. You're you're seeing the 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 hundred unit design is underneath all this, so pay attention to the color. So I can, what I can do is just erase this. And then I'll
Oh, so those those parking spaces aren't, don't exist anymore. There you go.
That's all gone, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Okay, that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, all right. I was just confused by that. Okay.
Yep, there, that's a little cleaner for you. Yeah, the idea being, you know, we're keeping this as far away from Yep, there, that's a little cleaner for you. Um, yeah, the idea being, you know, we're keeping this as far away from, uh, every, everything, not just on site. But as far away as we can from residents' homes. You can see there's a lot more opportunity to put in screening along Mr. Conway's property. All the parking is either facing the building or facing screening in an area where there's no homes or facing. Um, you can see these ones up on the Haunt Street would be facing out, but you know, there's plenty of space here to work in. You know, if we want to put a forty-two inch, you know, screening fence or whatever, knee wall, whatever feature in that area, there's space to do it. To address any, any potential headlight issues. Everything's fo- focused internally, um, on this design. In the, in the enclosure here, of course, this would be fully screened, uh, with a six-foot minimum enclosure around that. And, yeah, less frequent pickups will minimize, you know, the dump truck, any dump truck noise.
Okay, I think presenting that will, will prevent some questions when you go to the board as well. Um, so, you know, one of the.
And the other, and the, the other thing that Tom, I would add is that as you, you know, I know this is some print. You really haven't started looking at your units, but if you can take this building and step it back at all. Or step it in, or make it not quite as rectangular so that it doesn't feel quite as high. Uh, that there are some reductions. I don't know what you can do with any of that at this point. But if there are some modifications you'd make, that would help it fit into the neighborhood more. From a dense, uh, density is the wrong word, from a, uh. From just a size, the, the, you know, to make it not feel quite as tall as fifty feet. Cause you've got nothing that's fifty feet on the road pretty much. Um, but if you can step it back. So that people don't feel like it's a wall of a building or articulate with some sort of ins and outs. Or pat, you know, I'm not an architect, so, but there's gotta be ways to do it.
Yeah, something, it's a good, good piece of feedback and I'd have to look at the floor plan with Stefano, of course. Um, one thing that Stefano did talk about was an opportunity for another amenity space on, on, so if this. And again, this is just a, for example, if this were a step back at three stories in this area here. You know, we would probably like to have some sort of a, a roof amenity space here. Where you take the elevator up, you build to exit out into this space and there could be chairs or, you know, whatever, there could be something there.
Yeah.
And we did also talk about, you know, again, in, in the efficiency, you could, you know. You could see little bump outs or overhangs, you know, above to give this more, more texture, you know, so this is just.
Correct, okay.
It's, it's no matter how hard I try, I, I am always a civil engineer, so I, I tend to go.
Yeah, I'd let, I'd, 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 Mr. Cameron, I'd let Stefano deal with that and you worry about parking spaces and fire trucks.
Exactly.
Once we have the, once we have the layout and the footprint in place, that's when we'll move up the building and really start developing the layout, the exterior.
And keep in mind where the layout, where the building is currently, I mean, you can see it on the plan, where the building is currently positioned. It's really behind the two Nahant Street structures and. Sits a little lower topographically, right? On the, on the site.
Uh, it'll probably be similar, uh, because the stormwater is still gonna drive everything.
Right.
So we'll probably be similar to what we had before, but you know, obviously we've got some more space now. You know, I'm hopeful we can eliminate a retaining wall here. I'm hopeful we can eliminate, you know, retaining wall here. I just, I haven't run this yet, but I. I think we'll be able to get rid of a lot of this stuff. Um, so it, it will, it will shape as it comes out towards the adjacent properties, it'll shape better.
And it won't, it won't impose on the butters, uh, as, as much, um.
Correct.
But because of that reduction in retaining walls and so forth. And I think too, once it gets to that level. Once we do the comparative elevations and so forth, we're gonna provide that to you again, I'm sure. Um, I think you'll really see this. Uh, at least I hope. I haven't seen it myself, but I would hope you would see it from a different perspective. Um. You know, from a massing effect. I would hope we would all see it from a different perspective, you know.
Yeah, and if Stefano can do things with heights or roof lines and stuff like that, I, I think it will go along.
Maybe mantered roofs and things like that. Uh, yeah.
So, w- with that, you know, thinking about schedule, maybe you guys should take a little extra time. We, you, you've extended to the end of the year. And I don't want to be spending your, your client's money, Mr. Pinos, but I think if Stefano did some work. Especially to Chip's point on the front of the building. And that you presented that as part of the next iteration to the, the board, I think it would be helpful. For them to see that type of movement as well. So I leave that up to you. I mean, if you want to come in Wednesday. I have no problem bringing this back to the board. I agree with Chip. I think you're gonna continue to hear some concerns about density. And folks, and, and as you well know, the last memo we have from T A C. Made some representations that in T A C's opinion, it was unsafe. So that's what they have. So that's why you gotta go back to T A C, chase that down, get back in front of them. And then, um, these other changes can be presented as well.
And we're fully, uh, prepared to engage in that process, which is why when we're in front of the, the board, maybe, maybe Wednesday. Scott, are you available Wednesday to do this, uh, brief presentation? Because it's gotta be a b- brief presentation. There's not a lot more than you see here to, to, to present. Um, are you available on Wednesday evening?
I am. Uh, I'm, I'm available. I think, uh, I, I just reserve, you know, maybe we, we, after this, we talk with our team. And decide if we want to have that additional, um, detail for that meeting with regards to the massing and density. And whether it makes, uh, maybe, wh- what's the next meeting after Wednesday?
Two weeks from then.
Oh, I don't know, because that's November. I def- let me check.
If, if I remember right, Tom, and my date might be wrong, but it's the middle of November, like the fourteenth, maybe?
Thirteenth.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
That'd be the second, I would say.
Yeah, that would give you a couple, that would give you a couple of weeks anyway, three weeks.
My, my only ask is this, that I, I understand density, uh, particularly from this board. Is always going to be somewhat at top of, uh, at the top of everybody's mind. All I would ask is that we not go there just yet until. You know, we just want to get this concept out and, and not go there just yet until we have started down the road of those additional reviews. And fleshing out these plans, not, not prejudge density just based on a number. You, you know, at, at this point, um.
Well, no, I, I, I think what you're hearing is that we think you've come a, a ways.
Yeah.
That it's worth for the board to see.
Okay.
Get their full input. Um. You know, you've got more green space than you had, you've got the more landscaping than you had. If Stefano, I would think that it will help a little bit if Stefano can take some time and. Consider how to get it not to be such a big block, but. More interesting. Um. That that would help with the overall feel of the, of the, of fitting into the neighborhood.
And I guess what I'm suggesting is before we spend the time and effort to do that. You know, that we would be prepared to potentially do that at that November thirteenth meeting. But maybe field some more general and broad, you know, and broader comments from the board on this. And get some.
I mean, you certainly can do that. You could, I mean, this doesn't present poorly for Wednesday.
Is that putting the cart ahead of the horse in your opinion?
Well, it, it, you, you, I know you don't want to discuss density, but I'm feeling a little bit like. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. So. I, I, I'm sensitive to that, but I'm thinking that. There's, I have no problem with you guys coming Wednesday. But if I were you, I would want to present the best presentation possible the next time the board sees this.
Second week in November, then.
And have Stefano look at that. I, I, I think Chip is on to the, that front facade on the Haunt Street is a difference maker. Cause that's how the people of the neighborhood are gonna experience that building. And that's how the town's gonna experience that bill. To your point down the back, I don't know, I'd have to see sightlines from, I'm gonna go back out there. And, and look from the adjoining streets and try to figure out what we're gonna be able to see and not see. So, um.
Then well.
I'll leave it up to, you know, I think Chip's saying the same thing. Ball's in your court. If you want to come Wednesday and present this, I have zero problem with that.
No, I think, uh, I think to your point, you know, if I'm reading between your tea leaves, uh, Tom. Let's, let's just flush this out a little more and present at the beginning of November. And, uh, you know, have, have, put a little more meat on the bones, if you will.
Yeah. And I'm sure, I don't want to speak for Chip. I, if we can find an hour before the thirteenth too.
Sure.
After you think you've made some progress, I'd be happy to jump on a call.
Sure, because, and let's take some administrative notes here, uh, Scott and Stefano. If we're on the thirteenth, it means we have to have a submission to the board by the eighth. So maybe a couple of days before then. You know, we could set aside an hour with you guys.
Yeah.
Hey, sorry, sorry if you said the meeting data changed. On the website, we have, uh, November twentieth, but it's noted as tentative. Is it definitely on the thirteenth or is that nonsense?
Oh, no, there was that whole discussion, Tom.
Oh, yeah, I think we are the twentieth.
I think we shifted to the twentieth in a way because a couple of board members were not available the thirteenth that are on this.
But what I'll do is immediately after this meeting, Gil's at home, but I will, uh, I'll find out. I'm ninety-nine percent sure Chip's right though, and whoever just read that off, I think it is the twentieth.
Yeah.
Yeah, so then we'd have to get materials in by Friday, the fifteenth.
Yeah.
Right, gives us some more time.
It's four weeks from today.
Yeah.
Alright.
So that's, that's tight, um, to coordinate everything and get, uh, polished renderings if.
I, I don't think, guys, I wouldn't, I wouldn't try to get them polished. I would try to get some decent rendering. With some ideas, um, to float by the board, right? It's not gonna be a final plan. I can guarantee you that.
Yeah. Alright. I, I think that also gives us time, definitely get another meeting with you two and then, and subcommittee. And then we'll see, we'll see if we can have any information ready for a T A C even. Um, I think that's a good, healthy, more by, more we can come in with on the twentieth, the better.
Yeah, I would jump on the T A C, Scott, because of the holidays and stuff. I'm not sure when they meet, you know.
And it do it immediately after we hang up here, uh, and reach out to, um. To Lieutenant Anderson and copy Scott Thornton as well. Look, with Scott Thornton's work, uh, you know, his traffic report, I don't expect it to change that much because there are reductions. It's easier to go to step back than it is to add, right? So i- it's basically the analogy of the eraser and reconfiguring some numbers. From a traffic analysis standpoint, this is definitely going to get, get better and less, less intense. Than what's currently presented. Um, you know, so I, I, I don't know that Scott needs a lot. Scott Thornton needs a lot of time with this, honestly, but, uh. You know, we'll let them hash it out. We'll let Scott and Lieutenant Anderson hash it out and get us on that next T A C agenda. Because I think, I think that Scott Thornton, based on this, can, can come up with, uh, version two of his traffic report. I don't think he needs much more than this.
Okay.
Okay.
Could I ask one last question? Uh, Tom, if I could, um. Uh, this is more for Chip, I guess. You, you mentioned something about sidewalk issues at the high school and I apologize. Uh, I'm not, I'm not aware of this, but what, what are the sidewalk issues?
Oh, I'm just, so, so Nahant Street's a horrible street.
Yeah.
No, no, no continuous sidewalks. It's curvy. However, it is a public route. Right to the high school and to the Volk, you know, from downtown. So there's kids walking along the road. I mean, and that's people's concern is that Nahant Street's horrible to begin with. And then, which isn't your problem, it just happens to be that your site's on a horrible, one of the worst streets in town. You know, there's no continuous sidewalks on both sides of the street. There's no safe walking routes. Um, and whatever number of units you put on here, people are gonna have it be perceived not to be. Adding to the safety of the street. That's kind of what I was saying. So. It's, it's a inherent problem in, in Nahant Street as its, as its own being.
Yep.
And, and Scott, you've heard this before because it's not just the high school in the Volk.
It's going the other way to the Galvin too.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's an elementary school right next to the high school. So there's, there's four schools right there.
Yeah, yeah, and there's sections of sidewalks both sides and then the sections without. I, I can see what you're talking about. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that what that was. Um, but that makes sense. Thank you.
Now, if you come in and want to straighten out in a haunt and put sidewalks on both sides of the street, I'm sure people would have a better perception of the project. Only kidding, guys, only kidding.
But more information I have, the better, so.
But, but that's, that's what, you know, and then people, there, if you look at the, 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 the accident logs. There's tons of accidents all the time on the Haunt Street. Corners are bad, sightlines are bad. Um, yeah.
And I, I, I know that Scott Thornton and Lieutenant Anderson worked, uh, worked. Very carefully to cull that information. So we have it. Uh, we have all that crash data. Uh, I believe it's addressed in the current accident report, so unless it's changed since that accident report was.
Probably not.
Generated, I mean, it is what it is, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, I, and again, I'm just stating what it is, not that you guys are gonna change it at all. You're just adding to a bad road.
Well, and we, we hope that the conclusion doesn't change that by adding units. We're not gonna necessarily add to those impacts, those negative impacts that exist today. And I think that was the conclusion of the traffic report and I, I think that conclusion would only get stronger. Because we're reducing density by twenty percent. And, and then as Scott pointed out. That unit, um, count, you know, uh, the, the, the unit configuration rather. With an emphasis toward one bedrooms and studios really does impact internally. You know, uh, those, those traffic circulation and, 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 uh, traffic generation. Impacts as well. I mean, you're have, you, you've got, you've got more one beds than two beds and certainly than three beds. So we'll see how it all shakes out. I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm not gonna.
Nope, nor am I.
I'm not gonna conclude what they're gonna, or even suggest to assume what they're gonna conclude, so.
Alright. I think we have a plan. I, I, I got a one o'clock back at work. Um.
Okay.
Chip, you okay? We got four minutes.
I'm good. I think we got a good plan. Yep.
Uh, do you need a letter from me? Uh.
I don't think so. Well, um.
No, do we need to get a letter for continuing?
To continue to the November meeting?
I mean, are we on your agenda for?
Yeah, you know, yeah, I just need a one-line email. Like, we, you don't need to put a whole letter together. Just. Because Chip and I, you know, something we'll just.
Yeah, we'll, we'll give a quick, yeah. Still working on things. Need to move it.
Yeah, and if you could, if you could kindly represent to the, to the overall board that we are working together on this. And that we're, we're keeping it at a subcommittee level, uh, for a reason, because we are taking your feedback into consideration. Um.
No, that's how we usually work. They, they, they know that when we're ready to show something to them, it'll be there.
Perfect. Awesome.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Alright, thanks.